All right, man. Let's just start this home. All right, can everybody see that? Let's see. There we go. So if you're joining us tonight, thank you so much for joining our first meeting of our series Farm Management During Uncertain Times. So the whole goal for this and the reason why we put this together is here in Tennessee, we had county agents that had addressed some concerns to us that producers were asking them questions about farm management concerns given current events that are going on. And so we decided the UT Center of Farm Management decided to put together this series which both has live town hall meetings via Zoom that is going to allow producers who have already registered to have already put in questions and concerns that they have that they would like maybe to have answered or discussed. As well as this series also has a library of recorded videos that we will share in the chat box, the link for that to where producers can access that. It is available to anyone at any time and it is available 24/7. This is not something that is going to go away, but the vision with that library is under this new UT Center of Farm Management is to allow an opportunity for producers regardless of what is going on is that they have access to these videos and these topics to address concerns that they may not have, just not during situations as of right now where there's drought and rising inflation, but they may have concerns in the next two to three years when things may not be going on as they are now, but that was the goal of this series is try to answer questions and help producers navigate these uncertain times. And so with that, just a reminder and just kind of some housekeeping items for participants in this. Viewers, your microphone and videos are disabled just so that we can have a larger number of people joining us and allow easability versus hearing you and being able to ask questions. If you do have questions, please type them in the Q and A. Your general comments can go in the chat bar and then I believe Charlie has also set up something for anonymous questions if you don't want to ask them for where everybody can see them if they're a little bit more on sensitive topics. Charlie, do you want to kind of explain that real quick how that may work?
Yeah, thanks Tori. And so as she said, it's the center, the UT Center of Farm Management. This is an event that we were hoping to help everyone and Seth Ingram is, is going to be hanging out in the chat box for us to remind us of a link. Within that link, if you click on it and you have a question that you don't want to, you know, put your name associated with you while you do have the ability to anonymously submit a question. He's going to sporadically post a link in the chat box that has a link that you can click on, submit a question and he'll regurgitate that question. The one that you see right there right now and he'll grab those questions and he'll put them in there. We don't ask the name, we don't ask anything, no information, no demographic information or nothing. You simply put your question in there, he'll put it into the chat box for us as panelists and we'll answer it.
Thanks Charlie. I just wanted, he had kind of put that together for us and I wanted him to explain that for everybody. But before we get started into this discussion, I did just want to kind of introduce our panelists for tonight. We've got a great group coming in for our first session tonight and tonight I was putting this together and I was looking at everything and we've got a sea of orange tonight. So I like that. We've got UT and Oklahoma State. We've got a sea of orange tonight. But just to kind of start off with who we have, Chuck Danahauer, he was a farm management specialist for University of Tennessee Extension. He was in West Tennessee. He is retired now, but we're very thankful that he was willing and able to join us for this discussion tonight. We really appreciate, appreciate that and look forward to hearing his perspective on a lot of these topics. The next one is Kevin Ferguson. He is a farm management specialist for UT Extension. He's in Middle Tennessee and he is also our state managed coordinator for the managed team, which all farm management specialists are under. Our next one is Alan Galloway, also a farm management specialist for UT Extension. He is also our state agricultural income tax program coordinator. So he works a lot with our income tax seminars and tries to answer tax questions when we have them. Our next one is Dr. Amy Hagerman. She is at Oklahoma State University. She's an assistant professor and an extension specialist for ag and food policy in the Department of Agricultural Economics at OSU. Our next one is Daryl Hensley. He is at the University of Tennessee and he's an extension assistant professor in the Department of Entomology and Plant Pathology. Following down that bottom line, we start off with Dr. Charlie Martinez. He's with University of Tennessee and he's an assistant professor as well as the farm and financial management specialist. And he has currently taken on a new role as director for our new center of farm management. So we look forward to seeing that take off with him as the lead director on that. We have Dr. Katie Mason. She's an assistant professor and a beef cattle extension specialist. And she focuses in beef cattle nutrition. Our next one from Oklahoma State University is Dr. Daryl Peel. And he is a professor and extension specialist for livestock marketing in the Department of Ag Econ. Then our next one is Dr. Tyson Raper. He is University of Tennessee Associate Professor. And he's our cotton and small grains extension specialist. He is taking on a little bit more right now. Our corn and soybean specialist has retired at the moment. So we're very grateful to have him on here and getting his view on the road crop side. And then finally, Dr. Erin Smith. He is an associate professor at the University of Tennessee and our crop marketing extension specialist. And he is a co-director along with Dr. Chris Foyer for our Center of Farm Management as well. So thank you to our group of panelists. We absolutely appreciate you being willing to take the time to join us tonight and we look forward to the perspectives and input that you can provide for our producers tonight. But to kind of get the ball rolling and to just kind of start things off, I just wanted to show a few things and then we're going to get off of this PowerPoint so we can see each other and have a discussion tonight. But right now, as of August 2nd, this was released August 4th, this is the US drought monitor for the majority of the South. And what we see here is that we see drought conditions. We've got anything from no drought to all the way to extreme drought, but to kind of target and pinpoint this a little bit more for our Tennessee producers, we want to look at this. And so what we see here, the week before, if you look at this, general rains have really helped the overall drought conditions for certain portions of Tennessee. But here in West Tennessee and portions of the central Tennessee, we still see some of that severe drought and even some extreme drought in our counties. So we're still dealing with drought. We're looking at how that's going to impact tonight. Not only our row crops, but also for the beef cattle sector as well. And then not only are producers right now at this very moment handling problems with drought, we've also been having to fight this thing called inflation. And this has not been something that's just come up in 2022. We were starting to see it at the end of 2021 as well. And what this is, just to give you a perspective of where we are right now. So this graph shows us 100 plus years of inflation. It's the annual percentage change of the Consumer Price Index. And what that does is show us the change in prices paid over the last 12 months. So what we see here and we look here, if we see this number, this high line at the very end of this chart, that was 2021. We've not seen inflation like this since 1981. This was a 7% increase in prices for that year of 2021. To point this out even more, for June of 2022, in the last 12 months, we've seen a 9.1% increase in prices paid by consumers. So to put this in perspective, that 20-year average was 2.1%. So not only are producers having to navigate these concerns but of drought and other current events, but they're also having to navigate inflation and these rising prices. And so what I want to do is start off with a general discussion on the road crop side and we're going to have discussion on both the road crop and the cattle side tonight, but I just want to kind of start that off and then we'll shift gears later on. And I will say this, I do want, when I was talking about our panelists, I forgot to mention. If you notice, we kind of don't discuss forages tonight. There is a reason for that. We're probably going to more than likely discuss that on Thursday night. Simply because we do have Dr. Gary Bates. He is now the department head for plant sciences at the University of Tennessee. But he was also our forage extension specialist and we're really thankful to have him and he has a lot of input and perspective on forages right now and navigating that with drought for our hay producers and cattle producers. So if you do see that we're kind of not hitting that tonight, we are going in that direction. But if somebody has a question tonight that they can't join us or they won't be able to tune into the recording, we'll try to do our best to answer it tonight as well. But to get this ball rolling on our questions and topics, what we're going to do is start off with questions that have been sent in through the registration link and then we'll open it up to the floor as well for anybody who's currently on that would like to ask questions during the live session. So the first one is dealing with this drought. We've seen that, as I said, these general rains, they've really helped the overall drought condition. However, drought is still very relevant here in West Tennessee at the moment in parts of Middle Tennessee. And so the first thing I want to ask, and I'm going to ask this, I'll ask Tyson first and then also kind of ask Erin to fill in as well, both of y'all's perspectives. Have we missed those critical times that rain was needed for these crops? You know, it's raining right now in West Tennessee, but have we missed that window of opportunity for some of our crops? Producers are wondering. Tyson, I'll let you go first.
Great question, Tori. Absolutely. I think the answer is yes across all of the major road crops. I think the largest impacts that we'll likely see will be in the corn crop. We'll see some impacts in full season beans, more impacts on that short season bean, double crop bean. And then clear impacts on cotton. And I think of all the crops, cotton's positioned pretty well now to rebound. I think some of the full season beans have the potential to rebound. But I'm extremely concerned about what we're going to see in corn and double crop soybeans moving forward. It's wonderful to have the rains at this point. I am, I am glad on some of our late corn. You know, we're able to turn the irrigation off and save that fuel cost, but yeah, unfortunately, a lot of the damage has already been done.
Erin, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, you know, I'll just be kind of in general terms, but you know, as we move east to west, obviously the west has been, been more adversely affected, but it is highly variable depending on where you, where you travel around. But Tyson's 100% right, you know, corn, obviously. It's, it's pretty, pretty light to think that much is going to end up being benefited from that. So again, you know, there's, there's a couple of other things that we could run into, into issues with. If we look at, you know, these, these late rains, how does that affect the harvest interval? What does that end up looking like moving forward? What alternatives are there, if they're available? But yeah, it's the, the big thing is we've seen anything from complete write-offs to, to mild yield reductions across the state. So it's very, very sporadic overall. For sure, we're going to definitely be down particularly on corn, but across, across all crops.
And looking at that, you know, talking about that variability and where we are at the moment, I was looking at the crop conditions from this year compared to last year for 2022 corn. We've got as of last week, 16% that is being considered very poor, where this time last year, 0% was considered very poor. So producers are having to deal with a whole different scenario and as Tyson hit on, cotton is looking right now the biggest one for the rebound based on crop conditions and progress that we're seeing. But Erin, I kind of want to ask you another question with what you were talking about. You, you mentioned variability, a lot of that and everything going on. Well, with all this variability, not just in yields, but also a lot of uncertainty in the markets and the environment. There's a lot of volatility going on right now that's stemming from rising interest rates, inflation, geopolitical tensions. We're seeing all of that and it's creating a lot of daily price swings as we're getting ready to enter into harvest season. We're still uncertain about our production right now in the US and what our potential yields are going to be. We kind of hit on this the other day in our library of recorded videos, but I really think given producers were asking this question, we want to bring it up here in our live session as well. What are producers, knowing what the costs that they've put into this crop for this year gets, rising costs? What are they needing to keep in mind when it comes to this harvest season? What are they needing to think about as we go into this year?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I think one of the biggest challenges right now or must do is you have to get with your crop insurance and see what alternatives are available through crop insurance programs. Everybody purchases crop insurance a little bit different. There's different unit structures, there's different buy-up levels. But we want to have those conversations because one thing that works against us is time. All this time does is eliminate options in terms of discussions. And before any management practices are undertaken, we want to make sure that they are cleared with the crop insurance agent. And there's a continual dialogue, not only on yield losses, yield losses are terrible and they need to be discussed, but quality concerns need to be brought to the forefront immediately. I've been in numerous conversations and we don't maybe have the data yet, but I think there's some, some reasonable expectation that we will have some alpha toxin issues in, in this year's crop. And there's a whole new ballgame of different considerations if, if that is the case. And so working through that, that crop insurance agent is, is very important for this year's crop. The other one that I think is imperative under these circumstances is constant dialogue with your ag lender, both about the balance of this year and then into 2023. Unfortunately, it looks like we might get a double, a double hit in 2023 as opposed to 2022. We all know how expensive this crop was to put in the ground. But if you go and you take another three and a half to four percentage points on an operating note, all of a sudden you're talking about elevated cost from there. And just for an example, you move a million dollar operating note to plant a crop, three and a half points, that's $35,000 a year. So again, we're talking about substantially different requirements if we are financing the next crop, but we also want to make sure that we're making prudent financial decisions for the existing one. And so the big one with me is first and foremost crop insurance. Second, see what positions you have that are open in the market, anything that was forward contracted or hedged. And then have a reasonable idea of what your production estimates are going to be across insured unit. And then look and see, is there a deficit in terms of what is already contracted? Or do you have some that is going to be available for sale? And then what is the conditions of those crops is imperative to look at as well.
And that's great information right there that Erin has provided for us. I did forget to mention, if any panelists have anything that they want to add in on top of this, I've, I asked the initial question, but if any panelist wants to add something into this, please feel free to add your perspective in as well. We'd be more than happy to hear it. I just direct the initial question. So we're not sitting here waiting for somebody to answer, but add, add in your commentary if you would like to, most certainly. Erin, you mentioned something that I want to kind of hit on and I want to ask Kevin to kind of speak on this. And it's the ag lender relationships with the producers. Kevin, right now, if things are coming up, there were some questions that was asked about, what if I can't pay every bill that's come to me? How do we need to handle this? How do producers need to think about this when that time comes? If they are in that situation?
Well, thanks Tori, and that's a good question. I guess the first thing that I would remind those producers of is first of all, they need to take care of themselves and their family. You know, that's where they're focused on, on paying those bills. But Erin touched on it very well. During the difficult times, relationships are very important. Communicate with the lender, communicate with the, the insurance agent, the crop supplier, all that. Talk to them upfront. And most of the time, they're very willing to work with the, the producer. It's a time to build those relationships. Don't hold back and wait till the end, you know? They, they don't like to be surprised. Any one of us wants that information upfront. And I think Chuck, Alan and I all worked through the tough times back in the eighties. And, and that's the one things we found that the folks that would reach out to the lender in advance, work through a plan, get someone else to, to work through it, we such as the area farm management specialist that it seems, I can remember Chuck Danahauer talking about, yeah, we, we tend to talk about the importance of planning during the tough times, but it also reveals the importance of plannings during the good times. So, and Chuck, Alan, you might want to fill in on that.
Yeah, I just echo that Kevin, I think the relationships are very important with the lenders, especially being on a more proactive type of scenario, I guess, rather than reactive. I mean, if, if we, we can figure out ahead of time if we're going to be short, if crops going to be short, we've got a lot more alternatives early on with the lender. If we wait until January or February or something and then we go in and say, I, I can't pay everything off, then our, our alternatives really narrow. I mean, it's, it's not a whole lot the lender can do at that point in, in helping a producer of, you know, make other arrangements. I mean, there's, there's several things that they might can do early on, but it's not as many later. In the crop insurance end, I think that's, you know, important to have a good relationship with that crop insurance agent. Talk with them, see what documents are needed as we go forward. And I also would recommend, you know, and I hate, you know, I don't want to come off as, as, as this wrong, but I, I would document everything with the crop insurance agent. What they tell you, you need, what, what documents do you, did they tell you you needed to provide? And, and I would do all that certainly before I destroyed any kind of crop, put a bush hog in it if it's not worth harvesting. You, you know, you need to know for sure from a crop insurance agent, what they need, you know, from you. And, and again, you know, have it documented from them, what they, what they want you to provide, you know, for the adjuster or whoever.
One other thing that I will just add on while we're on the crop insurance topic is we do need to remember to all of us have different policies, but if you have a traditional revenue protection, we do get another roll of the dice here when we go through the harvest price determination period. And so when we're looking at revenue projections, even though we might not have what we want to sell, you might be able to get a revenue bump if we do see markets to continue to rally. That's not a prediction. There's way too many moving parts right now. But I know that right as we sit right now, the December contract is about that projected price determination, for the projected crop insurance price. So if we do hold that through the harvest interval, we could be looking at a potentially higher revenue guarantee. Now, let's not say I would bank on that. We still need to act with the information that we have on hand. But you may want to consider that as you move through your, your planning here.
Just to add a quick note to the, on the side of the records and dealing with your lenders, I just wanted to add in, you might want to think about updating your balance sheets because if you're trying to work with that lender and, and, and that loan status, we've seen a lot of increases in land values, equipment values and everything else along with all the rest of inflation. So making sure you've got that balance sheet and your other, you know, income statement, that sort of thing updated could mean a lot in your discussions if you're trying to work out some, you know, additional payment plans or that sort of thing with a lender. Just want to make sure that was brought up too.
Absolutely. All of these are great points and things that producers are really need to think about and keep in mind right now. Chuck, you mentioned something and I want to hit on that. You were talking about being proactive. Right now, there's producers that are having questions is how do we continue to manage expenses when income continues to stay, stay the same? You know, a lot of people, a lot of producers are talking right now, they've already spent their entire fuel budget this year on just planting season and we're not even into harvest season yet. And so I want to ask for your point of view on the road crop side. How do we manage expenses when income continues to stay the same? And then I also want to ask Charlie on the cattle side, how do we manage expenses when income continues to stay the same? And we're seeing these increase in cost. So Chuck, I'll let you go first.
All right, and thank you for the question, Tori. That is a difficult question to address. That, that's, you know, hard for a producer, you know, looking at the, you know, yields that are coming in. I know when, when we sat down earlier in the season, producers that, you know, if we would have made up an average crop with price levels we're at, we were looking at pretty good profit. Even with inputs up, I think profitability was, was going to be pretty fair. But now with yields, you know, reduce, reduced quite a bit in some cases. And, and, and a lot of cases, you know, there's probably going to be some shortfalls. But what I would look at this time of year, along with what you're asking is to, you know, really know, as Alan mentioned, where you're at. I mean, with the balance sheet and then I will go from there and start projecting my cash flow statement. And I would, you know, that's different than an income statement, but a cash flow statement would be taken into account what I've spent in the crop up to this point or what I owe on what I've spent in the crop up to this point. Either operating loan or seed supplier, farm supplier, anybody like that. And then I would also project out what expenses, you know, I might need for harvest or maybe another sprain or two and, and cotton defoliation or something like that. I would try to project out what expenses that I'm going to have to have to get me through the harvest season. And you know, with that estimate yields, I know that's difficult to do this time of year with, when, and especially in a short year, it's hard to do. We'll get a little help maybe on Friday, Aaron, when the USDA comes out with their first yields with your farmer-based survey yields, but that'll be, you know, some indication. But, but take, you know, some my best case, worst case and do a projection and, you know, see where you're going to be at. See how, if you're going to be short, if you're going to have a profit and, and let that be a guide to, to decisions you make from there on.
So I think Chuck did a Yeah, so I think Chuck did a good job of highlighting the fact that you have to look at where you are right now in, in terms of production. So we could have some stalker people, we could have some cow calf producers. And from there, you got to say, okay, if whatever segment of the, of the industry you're in, you have to say, okay, what am I doing right now? Where am I headed? And you got to keep in mind that you're also headed into the winter, right? And so we know already from the get-go, we're going to be feeding a little bit more coming into the winter versus if you're in the spring and, and so forth. And so I think Chuck did a good job of just saying, hey, figure out where you are right now. I think an easy, an easy answer is if the rain keeps turning on and we get grass going, that's a, that's a, going to be a short-term solution. But then you also have to think, okay, moving forward, if, if I do get some hay in, in the barn and if I do start getting some prices that are in more in my favor, how can I take advantage of that? But then at the same time, when we're selling these calves, whether you're stalker or the cow calf producer, earlier in the year was probably, you know, super beneficial. If you're selling January and February, you're probably making pretty good profit. But as these inputs have gone up, revenue has kind of, depending where you are, maybe has not surpassed that. And so you're kind of playing a catch-22, you know, maybe you're barely just getting by. And, and you're saying, okay, if I'm keeping the same mindset moving forward, do I need to reduce maybe some mouths to feed, right? And saying, okay, maybe that's a way I can control some of my costs on a per head basis. But also if you're saying, okay, if the rain turns on, maybe you can use that to your advantage and say, okay, hey, I gotta, you know, I was kind of behind the eight ball a little bit. I get ahead, maybe I need to then focus on how do I stay ahead? And so I think it depends on what segment you're in. And it also depends on this current rain that we're getting across the state of Tennessee. Now, if you're going to ask regionally or, or, you know, nationally, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot more gives and takes, right? You know, if, if I think this week or this week, the, the current projection for rain was going to hit everywhere but Texas. If, you know, if rain hits in a lot of places, that could be beneficial across the board for a lot of people. But then that's where I think that's the beneficial of us bringing in Dr. Daryl Peel and I'm going to kick it to him and say, can you tell us a little bit more on the national side of what you think can happen in the future? And I'm going to pose the same question to Dr. Peel. What, what, what can and can we not do here in Tennessee if the conditions change a little bit?
Yeah, great question, great discussion so far. You know, for individual producers, you know, I think the time of year becomes really critical here and, and it's going to depend on where you are, exactly what kind of forage base you're looking at. In a lot of cases, you know, I, I really question whether or not with rain now, whether we're going to get enough forage to really get us through the winter and, and we're facing, you know, the end of the season or the last part of the season. So how much, how much grass, how much hay can we realistically make at this point? And so I think, you know, the rain may give you some short-term flexibility, a little bit of time to make some decisions. But I think you need to be realistic and again, earlier is better. This point's been made on, on the road crop side, but it's true across the board for drought planning that, you know, the sooner you start planning, you've got some flexibility, maybe not a lot, but the longer you wait, the less and less flexibility you have. And so I think producers, you know, need to really take stock of, of where they're at with their forage, their resources, feed resources. Again, no matter what kind of cattle we're talking about. In a lot of cases, we're talking about not just getting through this, you know, the, the rest of the summer or the next couple of months, but we're talking about how to get to next, next growing season. And so you need to be realistic and, and that, you know, from the standpoint of
And so you need to be realistic and 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 that, you know, from the standpoint of of financial management, you know, this is kind of tough love, but I'll say it, I've said it before, when it comes to drought, um, you know, from a cattle perspective, uh, the secret to surviving a drought is to have a business when it's all over with, not necessarily to have any cattle. Because if you get into this situation where you're just, you know, your mindset is I'm gonna do whatever it takes to hang on to these cows or these critters. Um and and, you know, with the feed market we're in, hay prices are high, feed prices are high across the board. Uh I think you have to be really realistic about, um, you know, looking at it from a more financial standpoint and and preserving equity in the business to make sure you have something when it's all over with. And so, you know, some people are in a more precarious posi- pitch uh situation with that than others. Uh but I think you really need to to be realistic about what, you know, what your flexibility, what your opportunities really are at this point in time.
Dr. Peel, I'm gonna follow up with that and ask you another question with that going. So right now, we've got a lot of, right now, with the drought going on, we're seeing that increased domestic cow slaughter, that lean beef production. That's what we're seeing. We're seeing cow cattle going to the market right now. For a Tennessee cattle receipts a week ago, we were a thousand more head than the same week last year. July twenty-second, that week, we were seeing two thousand more head going to the market here in Tennessee than we were a year ago. Producers are realizing that supplies is going to start getting tight and that those that can hold on to calves may see some type of opportunity. And so the question is, is how do we, they're 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 concerned, they want to hold on to them because of prices right now here in Tennessee. But they also may need to get rid of them because of the drought that's going on. How do we navigate the cattle markets right now, given increased feed cost, potential hay shortage? I know that is a loaded question. But we will see what kind of answer you may provide for us.
Well, it it is a loaded question because, uh, you know, we we're generally uh in a situation of tightening cattle numbers. That was true even without the drought, but the drought last year and this year have accelerated that. And and that does suggest, and and we certainly expect at this point that as time goes on, we're gonna see stronger cattle markets. And at some point, we may see remarkably strong cattle markets. We don't know the timing of that yet, because right now, we don't know when we're gonna stop liquidating, let alone when we could think about rebuilding. Uh so so yes, you know, anybody that's able to hang on, uh may be in a position to really take advantage of that. But again, I think in the short run, um, you know, you have to, again, be realistic about what your financial implications of trying to to hang on. Um, yeah, and I'll go back to, you know, a decade ago, we had a similar drought situation, at least in in our part of the country. And we had producers, uh, their mentality was, okay, I'm gonna pay whatever it takes to get hay or feed, keep these cows, because I won't be able to afford to replace them next year. They're gonna be more expensive. And the short answer is, by the time you feed them through to next year, you've paid that much for them anyway, and you got the same old, old cows that you had. In fact, they're a year older now. And so I think you have to be really realistic about that. I do expect that, uh, from a national market perspective, we're taking this industry to a smaller level than we intended to be. Mother Nature's in control right now. And and that is gonna provoke a fairly, you know, uh, strong response at some point in the future. Uh, we're gonna be generally trending higher and and tighter supplies uh from this point forward. But it may be, you know, it may be twenty twenty-four before we get into really tight supplies at some point in time. I would point out just as one statistic to to point out how kind of extreme this the situation that we find ourselves in. And it's really the cumulative effect, not just of drought this year, but last year and even to some extent the year before in some parts of the country. Um, so far this year, female slaughter, so cow plus heifer slaughter is fifty-one percent of all cattle slaughter this year. And it hasn't been over fifty percent of total cattle slaughter on an annual basis since nineteen eighty-six. So the bottom line is, we are, um, you know, we're really liquidating the the base cow herd, the female uh part of the industry that we're gonna operate off of, not just for the, you know, the rest of this year or next year, but really for the next two to four years. So there are gonna be a lot of implications to what we're in right now. But, you know, first and foremost, you got to look at where you're at right now and what you're, you know, realistically, what your resource situation is, what your possibilities are from uh for the, for, you know, probably to at least the next growing season.
I I I would then, you know, I I completely agree with Dr. Peel, and that's where I, you know, when when people are asking us, you know, how do we handle this current situation? In the beef side of things, some of this is stuff we haven't seen in a very, very, very long time. And so it's some of these, the the past, you know, plays, if you were thinking about sports and you run a play, it's it's very hard to predict as to what's gonna be the game winner. And in the the strategy that's associated with it, which then for me emphasizes the all the the importance to say, hey, this is why your current situation is gonna dictate what you have to do moving forward. And from that aspect, it's, do I hang on? Do I cull a little bit more off in order to gain, you know, what what I hope is a lot more revenue on the back end, which then is there more profit? Well, the question is, what is the back end? As Dr. Peel said, is it twenty twenty-three? Is it, you know, twenty twenty-four? You know, wh- when do we see the the realization of that? And I think that's where an an account of where you are right now is all the more important, because if you play it right, there could be some possibilities as you as you work through this and take your lumps right now. You could, you know, get eh enough and then also even more on the back end. And I think Dr. Peel did a good job of highlighting that aspect.
Absolutely. So I want to take something that Dr. Peel said and kind of push this question towards Alan. Dr. Peel was talking about, sometimes it may be beneficial to go ahead and get rid of those old gals on the farm, selling those cattle that are there during this drought or selling part of that breeding herd. What does that mean? And we hit on this in the library of sessions, but pro- producers were having questions about this that may be joined in. How do we handle taxes when selling these cattle?
Well, we've got some advantages, luckily, if we have to cull extra cows from the breeding herd. Uh base, basically, uh and of course, you want to work with your CPA, your tax preparer on this to make sure you get it right. But let's just give you a quick example. Let's say that a small herd normally culls out ten of their mama cows every year. That's just their average. But this year, because of the drought, they cull out fifteen. Those extra five that we culled out, if that was because of a weather-related event, drought, flood, whatever, then we don't have to claim the income on those additional cows that we claim, that we culled out of the herd. And we have up to two years to replace them in the herd. Now, obviously, you got to track what you got out of them when you sold them. And then when you do buy back, if you buy back cheaper, which would be rare, then you might have to, you know, claim the income of the difference. If you pay more than that difference, you can work with your accountant to depreciate that cost or whatever that way. So we do have some advantages. Now, also, if the county that you're in gets designated by the IRS as a severe drought county, and they put out a list every September of every county and every state of the counties that are designated such, then that two-year extension could extend to four years, could possibly go longer, but that's rare. But the, so you've got some time to replace extra mama cows that you call out of a herd because of the weather. And so that gives us some flexibility of not having to show that extra income when we really don't want to show it, because we're we're having tough times as it is. So that's one of the biggies for us. And the other one I have to mention quickly, Tori, is when we sell breeding livestock, we got to make sure our accountant knows that that income does not go on Schedule F. It goes on Form forty-seven ninety-seven, which is where we sell assets like equipment or anything else. But breeding livestock goes there, and that prevents us from having to pay self-employment tax on that income. And if we've owned those cattle for the right period of time, which is due to twenty-four months for cattle, which most cows that we'd be calling out of a herd, we've had them that long or longer, then that helps us with the possibility of that being shown as a capital gain rather than ordinary income. And so that's a plus for us on the tax side as well. There again, good records pays a half on that one as well.
Alan, we can always lean on you to answer those tax questions. You can't, we were talking earlier, you can't retire on us. We, you got to answer our tax questions for us. We need you.
I'll be here for a little while, yeah.
But I do want to just kind of digress for just a moment. We had a question in the chat box for an anonymous question, and I believe Dr. Hensley went ahead and answered it. Uh, but I want to answer it out loud for anybody that may have not seen it. What are safe levels of alpha toxin levels for cattle and poultry feed? So, Dr. Hensley answered that, um. Dr. Hensley, do you want to talk about that a little bit? And Dr. Mason, you may be able to add in some on the nutrition side as well as what's needed.
Yeah, by the US Food Drug Administration Action, I guess, for total alpha toxins in food to feed are per microgram per kilogram. For cottonseed meal, it's a feeding ingredient, three hundred micrograms. Corn and peanut products and finishing beef cattle is three hundred uh micrograms per kilogram. And then corn and peanut products for finishing slime, two hundred, so it drops there. Uh, corn and peanut products, I say, corn and peanut product for breeding, beef cattle slime and mature, mature poultry is one hundred micrograms per kilogram. And then corn for immature animals and dairy cattle, twenty milligrams per kilogram. Uh, it's twenty for all products except meal designated for humans. And for other feed stuff, twenty uh micrograms per kilogram. And then milk is point uh five, so it drops on down for milk.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And I think Dr. Raper also shared in the chat box a link to an extension publication from the University of Missouri aflatoxins in corn. So if that's something, you click on that link and it'll open it right up for you. That's an extension publication. Uh, talking about feed and nutrition, I want to ask Dr. Mason this real quick. Some producers have asked, you know, what are my cattle going to need? What are my options right now if hay's not an option? What do I need to think about providing them through these winter months? How do we need to go about that? And I know we're gonna get into forages Thursday night, but on the nutrition side, what are cattle needing right now through these winter months? How can they can start thinking about this?
Yeah, thanks for that question. That's uh something that I've been thinking about a lot through these conversations and I'm actually working on putting some materials together about um substitutes for hay and and how we can kind of fill in these um these supplemental feeds throughout the winter. But the first thing I just want to point out is whatever hay that you do have or that you can purchase or have access to, we want to make sure that we test that hay. Um, not only for the nutritive value, just to make sure that we know what we're feeding and we can balance a ration pretty precisely off of that, so that we can make the most economical feed decisions. Um, but also in light of us having drought conditions, testing that forage for nitrates. Um, that's been a big concern with a lot of our our feed stuffs, you know, thinking about folks that are cutting corn or or what they have left of their corn crop um to make silage or to put up. And so test it for nutritive value, test it for nitrates. Um, and then from there, we can, you know, start to make some decisions about how we fill in energy deficiencies or protein deficiencies, maybe with some by-product feeds or um other feed resources that are, you know, an alternative feed source. So um, that's gonna be, you know, pretty based on what your local availability is. Um, but I would say that, you know, start out with a test of what you do have. And then just get with a either a county agent or myself, or if you have a nutritionist that you work with um to really balance a a ration out, to make sure that you're using those resources efficiently. And then making sure that you're matching those resources to the needs of your animals. So uh, for example, if we think about our winter feeding season and we think about whether we have a spring or a fall calving herd, um, those fall calving cows are going to have higher nutrient needs in the winter because they're lactating compared with a spring calving cow. And so, you know, based on what our calving season is, we need to make sure that we use higher quality feed for those lactating cows compared with uh with those dry cows.
Really glad you brought up that about the nitrates, because that's something we've got to be very aware of right now, you know. All plants contain nitrate, but it's when those plants are under that extreme stress is when we start seeing those toxic levels. And even though drought conditions have improved for some of the state right now, there's still that high possibility of having that toxic level at the moment. And so that's, I'm really glad that you brought that up, um. So I guess my next question that I want to kind of bring up, and this is not the end of the discussion, but this is a question that's been asked, and it was brought up, and several of it came in today. And so I want to make sure that I get to this and ask this, is that some producers are asking, and I'll direct this to Dr. Hagerman. Some, some producers are asking, are we going to see any disaster assistance for that the drought-damaged forages and crops? Is that a possibility? And I know that's something that we may not know right now, but what is it looking like or what are producers' options right now? Is there programs at the moment they can think about?
Yeah, so I think that's a question we're getting a lot is what alternatives do we have? I think first and foremost is what Erin mentioned earlier, is your crop insurance. Making sure that you've got good coverage on your crop insurance. And those decisions have to be made well ahead of time. So you're even thinking about your next crop year on your crop insurance right now. Um, in terms of disaster programs, I'll actually echo things that were said earlier. A lot of those are run through the Farm Service Agency, so communicate with your county firm ser- Farm Service Agency really early. Make sure your documentation is really uh lined out. A a few that I will mention that are um specific to drought first is the the livestock forage program. And uh you may not have had many people who have had the opportunity to apply for that program in the past, but you showed that map earlier. That showed counties that are in D-two, D-three, and D-four drought. Uh, so if a county has had eight consecutive weeks of D-two drought for a particular kind of grass, these are grass-specific programs, they might be eligible for the livestock forage program. Or if they have had uh any levels of D-three drought, there were some counties up in uh that were that bright red of D-three drought, then they're gonna be eligible for the livestock forage program. And uh I I looked at the maps earlier, so it looks like we've got some counties for forage sorghum, improved pasture and native pasture that are eligible right now. Nice thing about that program is that you don't have to report it within a really short window, like some other programs. You actually have until just after the first of the year before applying for that LFP program. The others that I want to mention are um some of the emergency loan programs. Um, I'm not sure if you've passed all the deadlines for the non-insured crop disaster program through FSA. Uh, but you might have some counties where, especially if they're making some decisions about crops going in, that they might uh have some deadlines there for that. The the one that I think is getting a lot of um uh news right now is actually that emergency relief program, which is the ad hoc program that's out. Now, important thing to remember about that is the the letters that are going out for that ERP program right now are associated with the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty disasters. And so there are, there aren't any drought counties in Tennessee right now that will be receiving letters for the ERP for the twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one crop years. But just like we saw with that whip uh wildfire hurricane indemnity program that then became the whip plus program, there tended to be those subsequent years of some of that funding that could come out. And so we may see some additional years of ERP going forward in the future, and there is gonna be a phase two ERP. But a a really point, important point to remember there is going back to what Erin said. Some of these are really tied to crop insurance, and so there's an agreement to uh use crop insurance coverage for up to two years following participating in those programs. So those are a few now, uh you, we've got the Inflation Reduction Act that is uh kind of going, it's gone through the Senate, it's going through the House. It has additional conservation funds in it. And there are some funds that USDA could use for things like drought relief. So we'd have to see where that goes and what the final language looks like after it makes it all the way through the process.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Dr. Hagerman. We really appreciate that. And as you said, there are some, unfortunately, there's opportunities with some of those with the drought and the continuous eight weeks. You know, you don't want to call it an opportunity, because there's a reason that they're eligible for that. So we have to be careful how we say that, but thank you for letting us know of the that availability of those programs and stuff. So what I want to do right now, there's a couple more things.
Tori, there's just one thing I wanted to add in on there. And that is, you know, for some of these counties that have really been hit hard um by the drought, you know, art county or art payments is a is a possibility. Um, now, obviously, we still have to finish up the marketing year. There's a price component there. It's not a decision-making time period for that. We've already made those decisions. But if you have or in a county that's been hit hard and you have corn-based acres, it might be something where you can pencil in some some payments that won't be received until October of twenty twenty-three. But it's something that can be at least looked at. Now, we still have to complete the marketing year to get a final estimate. But for hard-hit counties, we've had some reasonably good years um that are on the books already. That may be something worth at least penciling out and seeing where we might be in terms of the payments under that program as well.
I I want to add one uh other program out there on the livestock side as as we start, you know, as Dr. Peel and I have talked about. And as we start moving forward into the future a little bit, there's a program, LRP, the Livestock Risk Protection Program out there that you can monitor and kind of think about. Uh, maybe, maybe we, if you know what your cost is within, you know, your 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 group of calves, it can be anything from one to uh forget the the max. It can be anything from one to uh forget the the maximum number. But as you start moving forward and say, okay, what what makes my break even or where can I lock in some type of uh profit? Uh, moving forward into the future, that could be something also as a tool to say, okay, I I'm taking my lumps now, as we mentioned earlier. But hey, I can lock in this price right now that's actually going to help me. And then that can also allow you the 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 flexibility to say, do I want to do some value added type uh ma- farm management type things? To try to, you know, sprinkle in some stuff on the top. And so right now is we're in the heart of it. Uh, you know, watching the LRP uh projections and and what's being offered, that could also be another way to. To try to capitalize on some opportunity that's there in the future.
Yeah, and I'll just add one more point on to that. I think for all of these, as as all these things just highlighted. When you're doing risk management, you're really looking out to the future. And you're thinking about what are the risks for my operation for the coming year, looking forward. Because some of these programs like ARC or PLC, you may be making that decision in October to March. But you're looking at a full year for when those would apply. A lot of these USDA programs like LRP. You know, you're getting your application and now you're doing your endorsements as they come up over the course of the next year. But you are really looking out to that period when you would be marketing calves out into the future. Um, and and as Charlie said, it's anywhere from one to six thousand head, which works great for a lot of our cow calf producers. But it's really thinking forward into the future. What are my big risks? And how can I protect well into the future on those?
And I think we were talking about looking into the future. I think we've got a two different scenarios or two different mindsets we have to think about. Is that proactive and the reactive? And a lot of when we were putting together this program, we were in reactive stages at this point for a lot of this of what do we do now? But. We're also talking about with these programs, how can I be proactive if we continue seeing this uncertainty? How do I have that risk management in my operation? And these are all programs, the LRP that we discussed, ARC and PLC. These are all ways that we can be proactive in having that risk management for our operation during those hard times. Absolutely. Uh, Dr. Hensley did put in the chat box um. That the Seoul Plant Pest Center in Nashville is accepting samples for nitrate testing. There is a fee for that. But that is a good option for producers if they're thinking about or wanting to know where those nitrate levels are in the crop or feed. Absolutely. So. I what I want to do at this moment is I want to open the floor for any questions from the audience. We had that one anonymous question. I don't, I hadn't seen any more come in. Is there any more that questions that producers online may want to ask? I know we've got a few on here if there's anything. And while maybe you're thinking about how you want to ask that or typing it in, the Q and A box right now, there's. Two things I really want to say, first of all, is thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for that. Thank you to our panel for helping us out and offering this information. Dr. Hagerman just put in the chat box that USC FSA has a disaster program discovery tool. So check that out. That's something that you can look at to weigh those options and to utilize that tool. But um, something else that I want to do, and I believe Charlie, you or Seth is going to put in here. For those participants tonight that are here, please tell us your thoughts on this. There's going to be a link put in the chat bar. Tell us what you think about this program, how if we were able to answer questions, how you needed to. If there's something else that you wanted in there, please fill that out for us. We'd really appreciate that. It doesn't have your name or anything like that on it. It's just, was this what you were needing? This is something new that we've put together and we're hoping that it is a success and that we were able to help producers just a little bit in some small way with this. But I don't see any questions right now. Please, if you have one, if you think about it, put it in the box, we'll definitely answer it. But I do want to ask one final question tonight that was put in by producers who had registered for this previously. And it was budgets, scenario planning, looking at my options. Who can help me with this? And so I think there's several people on this, considering all of us are an extension, that could probably answer that question. And we probably all have a little bit of a different answer in some way or another. I'll start off with our state managed coordinator, Kevin. Who can help with budget scenario planning? Who can help out with this?
Well, I hope that you would contact your local extension office and get in touch with the area farm management specialists across the state. When we're fully staffed, there, there's nine of us that are certainly, that's what we're intending to do, work one on one. And I I will come back to something that I think Dr. Peel mentioned, Chuck mentioned, uh. I think Erin, and it's the thing that during these time periods with uncertain times, the top portion of the balance sheet becomes really important. Current assets, current liabilities, working capital. You know, uh, we go back to the early warning signs of pending financial difficulties tend to be accounts payable is increasing. Which means credit card balances, open accounts are increasing and working capital decreases. So that's where a lot of focus needs to be from that standpoint, from from uh looking at. How can you manage and best manage that to get through these times? And it may be budgeting, it may be better record keeping, but uh you can toss it to some of the others and have their input as well.
As he said, there's the county extension offices that are here to help. County agents will always be willing to help producers. And if they don't have the answer to your question, they know who to reach out to, the extension publications. And that's just not for Tennessee producers. That's for Oklahoma producers as well on that. Let's see, um, there was one, I did miss a question earlier and it was, somebody did ask, I was late tuning in. How can I watch from the beginning? This is being recorded for anybody. It will be on our library page, our resource page. For anybody that wasn't able to tune in or missed bits and pieces of this. So check that out on that. It'll be on our library. Um, I will put that in the chat bar as well. So there is one. Here's a question. If so many assets are being liquidated, selling mama cows is the example. What are your thoughts regarding private sales as a means of profit making? I think we're all thinking right now at the moment.
Or just in what you need.
I was putting in the 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 link, I couldn't retrieve it.
Oh, for the survey, yes.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to find it. Uh, internet gave me a hassle here for a second. Uh. Could you repeat that one more time, Tori?
Sure. If so many assets are being liquidated and the example is selling mama cows. What are your thoughts regarding private sales as a means of profit making?
So I I I would, I would lean on the fact that, you know, I I think it's going to depend upon each situation. Uh, and and I'll just use, you know, if you've been breeding for seed stock, for instance, and you've been harness, you know, harnessing genetics. And trying to make an optimal, uh, you know, calf on your side as a producer. And you're selling these animals and you realize if I take the cell barn, while the salvage value of of a, you know, of a cold cow has been really great. Or a, you know, a calf has been really good. Recently here in in Tennessee. The question becomes, is that good enough? And you have to ask yourself.
We may let Charlie try to answer that question again on Thursday night.
You what?
Oh, you're back now. You were frozen.
Oh, where did it stop?
We're not really sure. I don't think any of the panel at the moment. We may let you re-answer that on Thursday night.
Well, I blame my internet. I I was, I was, I was deep in a response.
I will say, Tori, and Dr. Peel can probably address that. We have seen times when there is a drought situation, if somebody's got those genetics that are in demand. Relocated those cows, there's been someone that's purchased them in another part of the country that had the resources, the forage. I've seen that those cows move for a certain uh long distance, really. And if there's demand for that and you can reach out, yes, that private treaty may be an opportunity to sell. Some of those cows to someone else that does have the forage base.
And go ahead, Dr. Peel.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we have seen that in the past and certainly on high valued animals or animals that uh. You know, have value well beyond standard market value. That can be the case. Unfortunately, one of the things that makes this particular situation we're in right now pretty unique is the fact that. Again, going back to last year for sure, um drought has been much more widespread than we've seen much of the time in the past. So the drought has been more widespread. Um, and and, you know, we know. Um, you know, coming into this year, hay stocks were drawn down from last year, so we didn't carry a lot of hay into this year. And unfortunately, in the environment we're in, the areas that didn't have drought and aren't making hay because of drought. We're facing extremely high fertilizer and fuel prices and many, in many cases, cut back. Uh, so we're seeing reduced forage production for either of those reasons. And I say all that to say that I think, you know, unfortunately, the opportunities for relocating cows or for moving forage hay. Uh, around the country is more muted this time than we've seen at times in the past. But that said, there's exceptions to that. So certainly, if you have those high, high valued animals. You would want to look for uh those potential opportunities to uh, you know, to see if it's viable to do that. It's a fairly expensive proposition, so probably not for a, for a great number of folks, but in some cases, it certainly could be worth it.
And Kevin and Dr. Peel both hit on that, is I think it's very dependent on what type of genetics you have in your herd. To utilize those private treaty sales. It may be a little bit harder for a commercial producer. Versus one that has those straight genetics in their herd, those pure genetics. So very dependent on the producer, I think, is the answer to that. Would you both agree? And Charlie as well, very dependent on what your herd makeup is? Yeah. Um, any other, and there was a comment, there are quite a few livestock producers that their biggest part of income is private trading. Any more questions for our panelists?
Or I'll throw one other quick tax related tip to that end. If if a farmer decides to liquidate the whole breeding herd, let's say. One of the key things that's still in the tax rules is those heifers that aren't in the breeding herd yet, they're not quite old enough. You know, maybe you've got that heifer that's a year, year and a half old, that's not, that hadn't dropped a calf yet. If they were raised for the purpose of being part of that breeding herd, then when you sell them, they can still be classified as a breeding animal. Rather than what you would classify him as just selling a small calf or something. So there's some tax advantages there. You got to make sure you get those records to your tax preparer right. So they know what form or cubby hole to put it in to make sure you're getting all the breaks possible.
Great tip, Alan. Absolutely, yes. On the row crop side, Dr. Smith, Dr. Raper, who can producers reach out to to help with this? To know with crop side, maybe not the budgets or scenario planning, but who can producers reach out to? If they have questions on the crop production side right now or on the crop marketing side. Dr. Smith, I'll let you start off.
Yeah, I always go back to my my main five and your support network, right? And that's your crop insurance agent, your accountant, your lawyer, your lender. And then your support network, whether it's family, friends or people in your community. Um, I always think that it's really important to surround yourself that are supportive for your business, and particularly in these times to have those dialogues. Each one serves a different role. Some you'll lean on a little bit more heavier than than others during these times. Um, number one right now to me is the crop insurance agent, but uh I would also get with the the banker very quickly too to arrange. Uh, or make arrangements for the remainder of this year and for next year's crop. And then uh the tax man, I guess, would be the next one that you'd want to end up getting, getting involved with. Um, but the other one that I will say is don't forget about your personal health um and wellbeing as well during this time. It can be stressful. Um, we quite often don't sleep well, we don't eat well, it's a high stress environment. Um, so making sure that you're surrounded with a a support network that can end up um helping to to mitigate some of the stress that that is involved in this.
Absolutely. Dr. Raper, who can help? Who can reach out? Who can I reach out to?
I think, I think Dr. Smith perfectly answered that question. I do want to make one other comment. There are, there are other inputs between us and the end of the year. And I think we need to make sure that we are thinking very critically about the return on investment of each of those. We've already seen in the area uh some products push that have a relatively low return on investment. And we need to be working with our extension agents and and the specialists to make sure that everything we're doing from this point forward. From an input standpoint, identifying in cotton particularly that last effective breeding position that we think will make. To to take it to the basket and and we need to draw a line after that point and and stop investing in in those positions that likely won't make it. Same thing from a soybean and a corn standpoint, if at some point, we need to walk away and stop managing insect pests. Important to understand exactly when that is. So uh, but yeah, to to the question you asked specifically, Dr. Smith, I think nailed that. Um, the agent and 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 the specialist here more than happy to help however possible.
Absolutely. I think that's what it, go ahead, Chuck.
Well, I might add the uh, it's, you know, to work also with grain elevators, only marketing contracts. Uh, you know, if if you feel like you're going to be short, uh, filling a contract, see what the alternatives are, there might be something. Uh, you uh, you know, if if you contracted higher and the price is lower, uh, you probably can get out without any, any pain there. If it's opposite where you contracted lower and price is higher, uh, there may be some, some alternatives to roll it to another year. Or or, you know, like, a lot of them have some pretty creative type of other contracts that can help alleviate the situation. So I would visit with the the grain elevators uh to help that.
Thank you all for the input, uh, every, the perspectives, the input that has come in tonight has been fantastic. And hopefully producers were able to take some small piece away from tonight and we were able to answer their questions just a little bit.
So Tori, can I jump in just one more?
Absolutely. Please feel free to.
So we, we deal with drought a lot in the state, but I think we also have to remember that everything we talked about tonight. From the record keeping to the risk management to working with your main five, I love that, that term, Erin, I'm going to steal it. Um, to understanding the deadlines and the required documents, this isn't just drought. Whether you're talking about fire, flood, extreme freeze. These things work for every disaster. And so I think it's a great reminder going into the winter months. That, you know, these things all count for that as well. So just a a quick reminder that you're having these conversations with with your main five, with your family. Um, to think about these other risks as well.
I'm going to give it a minute, see if anybody else brings up some great advice. I mean, y'all just keep going. Absolutely. Does anybody else have anything they want to give at the moment, put in there?
Does my internet work now?
Well, maybe.
Somewhat not.
Try, yes.
I I guess the storm is rolling this way. I don't know. Um, is, am I good?
Yeah, you're still good. Keep going.
Well, no, I was going to say, you know, at the end of the day, everything, it seems like, you know, when you're in a bad situation. Or if you're, you know, working through any type of business relationship, relationships are key to successful business, right? And there's a line that comes up on on a, on a balance sheet that's never on there and it's called social capital. And right now is a good time not to discount social capital and your relationships with your, the people that have, you know, impact on your bottom line. And uh, I think that's one thing that is critical right now is make sure those are relationships you've, you've built over time. This is the time to lean on them if needed.
Absolutely. And, you know, Kevin's hit on this a few times, is that lean on those producers that have gone through these hard times. That have fought through this and have continued on, you know. When we were looking at putting this together, I brought this idea forth to the farm management team because. I'm part of that generation that hasn't seen these double digit interest rates or haven't seen inflation like this. I couldn't answer those questions from personal experiences, but I was able to lean on mentors that could answer these questions. Or remember that and try to navigate these times. And I appreciate that. And that's what I think producers as well lean on those relationships with producers who have gone through these tough times. And ask them, how do we get through this or how do I navigate this? Absolutely, Charlie, that social capital can be key right now as well as far as all the other resources we've talked about tonight. I am not seeing any more questions. Charlie, is there anything else in the anonymous group? I am not seeing any more questions. Charlie, is there anything else in the anonymous group? Oh.
No, ma'am, we're good to go here.
Perfect.
No, ma'am.
We're good. Um, again, please complete that survey for us. If you don't care, it is in the chat box. Just click that link. It's just very. Uh quick, just see how we're doing. Again, to our panelists, thank you so much for tonight, for your input, your perspective. The resources provided, we truly appreciate it. We will be, again, this recession is being recorded, so it will be uploaded to our page for anybody that came in late. And um. We will be hosting another town hall meeting. There will be some overlap of questions, more than likely a little bit, but we are going to try to. Answer additional questions that was brought into us. We're trying to keep a mix-up of different questions and different point of views. Both nights, we've got some panelists that will be the same that night as well as some new faces that will be joining us, so. That session will be recorded as well if you can't tune in for that. But with that, I think we will call it a wrap for tonight. Thank you all so much and we truly appreciate it.